I was going to ask Mr. Dahl, I know.
one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Well, this is the city, this is the city council meeting of September 25th, 2017. Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Denise Hoppy.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Any changes of the council minutes of August 28th or, and September 11th, as well as special note, study notes of August 28th and September 11th? Any changes in those? If none, they do stand approved as presented. We do have a proclamation tonight. We have a police department C A L E A award. Good Chief Brennan, maybe you can explain that.
Sorry, Mayor, the police department is a department that's full of acronyms. We probably should spell that out for you.
Please.
So, I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to present our third accreditation, national accreditation award to city council and citizens of our community. I've asked our accreditation manager, Ms. Colleen Slater, to join me, and Commander Mike Hendershot is, as well. And if you'll bear with me, I wanted to give both you and the community some idea of the significance of this award. The police department is proud to have been, to have been recognized by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, CALEA, with our second advanced law enforcement reaccreditation award since our initial accreditation award in 2011. The department strives to be an exceptional organization. In striving to be exceptional, high performing, and accountable to our citizens, the department sought out a process in 2008 that would, we felt, would improve our service to delivery, establish best business practices in our policies, procedures, and operations, and enhance the overall professionalism of the department and our department members. The CALEA Advanced Law Enforcement Accreditation Standards cover 38 specific topical areas and is comprised of 484 standards, which cover every aspect of professional policing today. Achieving this award for an agency our size takes a lot of teamwork, commitment, and perseverance. I would like at this time to formally recognize some key department members for their assistance in this process. First, I'd like to recognize our accreditation manager, Ms. Slater, for her commitment and dedication in shepherding the organization through a three-year process. Colleen came to us midstream during this process and worked diligently to learn the department, our policies, and put us in a position to be successful. In addition, I'd like to recognize other team members, Michelle Stotin, Nicole Abney, Laura McAvoy, members of the department's management team, and representatives from Human Services and others who helped us receive this award. So you know this is a three-year cycle that we went through for our third award. On our anniversary date, an assessment team comprised of two other law enforcement professionals from the United States visited our department and spent four days in April reviewing our files, interviewing employees, interviewing citizens, and then conducting a public hearing regarding our compliance with these standards. Afterwards, a report was forwarded to the CALEA Commission based on their observations during that onsite visit. On July 29th of this year, Ms. Slater, Division Chief Pickett, and I met with a subcommittee comprised of members of the CALEA Commission to answer their questions about that assessment report. I'm proud to note that there were no compliance issues in that report in regards to our meeting those 484 standards. Later that evening, the department was formally recognized and approved by the full commission with our second reaccreditation award, which is behind me, and Colleen there. I'm very honored to present this award to you and the citizens of Wheat Ridge for our third advanced law enforcement accreditation. Thank you. Will I answer any questions from council or?
We are very, the council and the city are very proud of our police department. Third year, that, that's amazing. Thank you so much for being such a great chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I see what, okay.
Yes.
Oh, right. I probably should run down there.
It's too late.
Too late, all right. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak tonight? I believe our attorney is, oh, we do have some. Okay. These are, these are items that are not on the agenda. Let's start with Thomas Lundey.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to alert all the people that are going to speak tonight. Please speak close to the microphone so that your voice carries on the tape, and spell your last name and tell, um, give your address. Thank you.
Oh, hi. My name is Thomas Lundey, L U N D Y. I live at 3500 Allison Street. Wheat Ridge Council, Madam Mayor, I come before you tonight to urge the city of Wheat Ridge to appeal the summary judgment rendered by District Judge Margie Anquist in the case of Longs Peak Metropolitan District versus City of Wheat Ridge. Case number 17 CV30542. This course of action is no more than defending the basic rights of the voters of Wheat Ridge as citizens of a home-right city. Moreover, there are reasons to believe that this ruling is deeply flawed and can be appealed successfully at little cost to the people of Wheat Ridge. Number one, District Judge Margie Anquist failed to accommodate that Wheat Ridge is a home-rule city with a devoted fine and determined city charter when she ruled that U R A was a matter of statewide concern. She ruled on general powers, state legislator, rather than innumerate of powers, which applies to home-rule cities. Number two, District Judge Margie Anquist has a history of handing down uninformed decisions as they pertain to municipal law. For example, it was she who first ruled that my friend Russell Weisfield lacked the standing to sue the city of Arvada in the famous open meeting case. As we know, all know, Mr. Weisfield triumphed in this case, you know, to the detriment of Arvada. The decision is inconsistent with the fact that the Littleton Tiff Reform Charter change, which in some ways formed the basis of ballot question 300, has stood the test of time. And before, there is no excuse to do more on the basis of expense. The city's insurance company, SIRS, is paying the majority of the attorney fees. The cost of appeal should not be expensive for the taxpayers or time-consuming for the staff. Pursuant to this, I am now announcing my intention and ability to file suit against the city of Wheat Ridge so they decide to decline to defend the will of the voters. And please be aware, I have conferred with expert counsel. I hold an uncontestable standing in the case by virtue of my being one of the filers of ballot question number 300. So once again, I urge the city council to do the right thing and make the right decision in their executive committee meeting later tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Minton, um, thank you.
Um, Madam, Madam Chair.
I've had a request, Natalie will be doing an RTD update, and I've had a request to give her an extension beyond her three minutes so that we could get more information.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Natalie Minton with the RTD Board. I'm coming before you tonight with two different items, the first being an update on the G, on the Gold Line. And I can tell you, we are, including myself, very frustrated with where we are at in this process. It seems like we continually here, we're submitting another application to continue to operate under a waiver. And it's frustrating because it seems like with trains having operated as long as they have and having crossings, why there is such difficulty in achieving the safety assurances that we need? That the train, the RTD line, along with the freight line next to it, have safe crossings. It just seems like we're struggling. The latest news is that the timing of the gates themselves have been adjusted, which, to put it in the simplest terms possible, the contractor in this project determined these are the ways that the system should operate, and then gave that to the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA. And now there is a, adjustments to how the system itself should operate, and that's part of the submission. We are waiting, the latest filing, I'm sorry, actually, the latest filing would have been about, probably going on about 10 days now, I believe. The Federal Railroad Administration met this last Thursday, but we have not heard anything from them yet. And we all hope it will be within a short amount of time, but I have no guarantees on when we're going to hear from them. At the same time, we're also filing requests from the Public Utilities Commission to continue to test on the Gold Line itself. What I would like to do on this matter is, I don't think there's any way that we can fit this in even within the three minutes or just maybe a couple more, is that I would like to have a community meeting about this. And I myself would broadcast it widely. And I am hoping I can get assistance from the city of Wheat Ridge to either use this room, which I believe will hold enough people, because I think even if we use, for instance, Wheat Ridge Activity Center, one of the rooms, it's 30 to 35 people, and you know there's far more in the community that want to hear about this. So I'm hoping maybe we can work a deal to use this room here at some time that would be convenient. That could be anything from, my main thing would be it's convenient for the public to attend. So, late afternoon on a weekend or in the evening, pretty much only nights I'm really tied up are Tuesday nights because we've got our TD Board meeting, so I'm open to working on that. I'll let you ask some questions if you would like about when it, when I'm all done. So that's the update on the Gold Line, is that we again have asked to continue the testing on the gates, and right now we're here, waiting to hear from the two public agencies about whether we can continue to do that. That's the only testing that seems to remain. And once that's passed, then we'll, it seems, be able to move forward pretty smoothly. The other reason I'm here this evening is, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to one other thing. The other odd thing is that with the A-line, we're filing separate applications, as you may know. So we have an A-line application and then the Gold Line application. The A-line, what we're also requesting on a different level, they're not tied together, is to be able to operate under a permanent waiver, which to me sounds strange, permanent waiver. But it seems to be it's not so odd, and so in this matter, I let staff proceed on what they are to get this system up the way it was supposed to be versus dragging its heels as we are now. The other reason that I'm here is that it's that time of year again when we do some service changes. There's really nothing in the Wheat Ridge area that's going to affect you a lot, except that the West Line is facing some changes. Right now, we're going out to public hearing on these matters, and the closest one for this area would be this next Thursday at the Golden Community Center. It's over on the west side, northwest area of Golden at 10th, 10th Street. That's this Thursday, 6:00 PM. And so I've given you all the breakdown of all the service changes. With the W-line, that might be the closest one. And the proposal there, which you may have heard about as it's made news, is that from the Federal Center out to Jefferson County Government Center in the off-peak hours, that would now move from a 15-minute interval to a 30-minute interval. The other change that may be a little bit more dramatic actually for some people is on the, all of the light rail lines, including the W, the C, the D. The last trip of the evening, which is usually Monday through Thursday, is about 1:15 in the morning. That would be eliminated, okay? During the nights that are a little more popular for bars, they would still be running at that last time. So I invite you to come to the meeting if you would like, I can understand if you don't want to. But what I would like to do is, this update with the Gold Line, there will be enough, if we can arrange that, there will be enough time to cover this more in-depth so the community can give feedback before we as a board vote on this October 24th.
So the public meeting you need, not for this one, this Thursday, but at some time at a date we can name. But the other feedback you need is on these, these changes?
If it affects somebody and they have something they would like to add before we make those changes, yes. So that public meeting would be covering both, and I'm surprised always at meetings, people have a lot of questions about RTD, so it's.
There's a lot of interest.
Yeah.
I think we could ask for a motion on that, and then we can have a discussion. Ms. Fitz, Mr. Matthews?
I move that we make arrangements to have a citizens' meeting in these council chambers at a date to be determined, date and time, so that the RTD can present more information, especially on the G-line, but for all other questions, such as, I know some people from up here are still using the West Line.
Second?
Mr. Fitzgerald, who's second in that?
Second.
Mr. Fitzgerald, any other discussion on that now? Ms. Hoppy.
You need this meeting before October 24th, is that correct?
Yes, correct. Ideally 10th, 12th, 15th, somewhere right in there would be wonderful.
Maybe Larry could add that to his motion, just so that it's on record clearly.
I mean, a date like final?
Before October 24th, I think is what she said.
I just wasn't, hasn't put an exact date on it right now. We can say before the 24th if you like, but.
No, she doesn't need it on the 24th, she needs it before the 24th because the 24th is their board meeting.
I would amend that to be added time before the 24th of October.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Question Natalie, does a permanent waiver mean that the guards will still be at all the crossings?
I don't believe so. Once we're given approval for operate, operating under normal function, I don't believe so. And there will probably be a certain amount of time of overlap though during operations, but for, I think you're asking if it would be permanent. Is that correct? Would they have to, would we have crossing guards there forever?
Since it's a permanent exception, and now they're, they're operating under a waiver now, I'm asking what the difference is between this waiver and the permanent waiver, and whether there still will be crossing guards on either side of the track at every crossing.
All right. When I asked the question about what would be any of the negatives to having a permanent waiver, I said there, I was told there really would be none. I would consider that to be a permanent negative to have to have crossing guards because that system is going to cost a whole lot more than even the incorrect original estimates. And there's a lot of arguments about the cost of what's going on right now, I can tell you. Specifically, the crossing guards.
Mr. Matthews.
We've, we've had an update from our city manager, who had an update from Mr. De Nova with RTD, that possibly around the first of the year, we may see permanent, or acceptance of the G-line. Do you have any further comments or information on that?
I specifically have not heard those words. All I have heard is, we're hopeful by this time, or this time, or this time. And as you know, when I was here, I think January of this year, that time, I gave the estimate of three to seven months. Obviously, that was not right. And that was my own guess, because I thought surely we would figure it out before then.
We have a motion on the floor about having a meeting, a public meeting, et cetera, and the question should be relevant to that particular motion. So I'd like to finish up that motion. Did, did you have a question relevant to the motion of timing? Okay. Then let's please go ahead and vote whether to ask, to have a public meeting when we'll get back to you as to the timing, et cetera. We'll work that out.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
And Mr. Urban has a question.
Thank you. So the R-line opened 214 days ago, and when and if the G-line opens, what kind of leeway will we have before service changes are suggested for the G-line? And what can we do ahead of the opening of the G-line to make sure we have a sufficient sort of probationary period for the G-line before suggested service changes would come down the track so that we have enough time to encourage increased ridership and not experience the same headaches that the folks surrounding the R-line are having?
Number one, I would say that you may not face the same challenges that the R-line does. To sum it up, the R-line takes roughly an hour to travel it. When in anything but peak rush hour, you're going to travel that in a car much faster. I don't believe that would be the case with the G-line based upon the time that it takes with this system. R-line also added some challenges with going around City Hall, some things that have just added time, and also looking at the destinations there. You're going downtown, R-line doesn't. You know, it's, it's, so it's a lot different. To add what you can do in your community, I would say that whatever information you're already sharing with the public, keeping the interest alive, that just imagine your trip, you know, you can do your, your chores or your Facebook or whatever, when you're on the train, it's coming sometime. To keep it clear to people that it's the Gold Line, people are getting confused right now. They kind of thought the R-line was part of the A-line and making people aware of the train, and it's still in the works. I think again, it's going to be a big factor for you is that it's going to likely be much better in the time of the, the travel than that R-line. That's really hard to face when you have an hour traveling from Peoria down to Lone Tree. You know, even if it's 10 o'clock at night, that's, who's going to do it? I can give you some more suggestions, you kind of caught me off a little bit, but the first and last mile is always a challenge. Hopefully, Wheat Ridge is prepared for the industry, the transit, sharing networks, in that any set of regulations would not be, there is a hurdle for that free market, which has really taken on a big need, that public transit didn't serve before.
Thank you.
And I think it's supposed to be commercial out in that last section still, so even the more some type of a circulator, or again, just leaving it open for people who are willing to travel all certain hours.
Natalie, would this be some of the information you could provide to us, generally all of these questions at a, at a larger public meeting?
Plus a lot more.
That'd be great, that'd be great. Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for the, working out the room, and thanks for the extra time. Have a good evening.
Sure. Dorothy Archer?
Good evening, Mayor J. Council staff and citizens. My name is Dorothy Archer. I live at 3640 Marshall Street, Wheat Ridge. I'm here to find out if a date has been set for study session on the issue concerning the 35-foot flat roof allowances on all zones, in the residential zones excluding R1C and R3. on all zones, in the residential zones excluding R1C and R3. Has a date been set for that?
The answer is yes, November 20th.
What is the date again?
November 20th is, is what it is on our tentative schedule.
Thank you for taking that into consideration. I'm also asking council, again, to post articles in all three of our local newspapers. This issue is of great concern to many of our citizens. For those of you who view this meeting on Channel 8, you need to be aware that at this time, any house in your neighborhood could be for sale, bought, scraped, and a single home or duplex 35 feet high, which is three stories, with a flat roof, could be built five feet from your property line. If this concerns you, please be in attendance at the first study session meeting concerning this issue, November the 20th. Let's keep Wheat Ridge the bright place that it is. And yes, I do address this in grave concern, because I'm very conscientious of affordable housing. And we all know, just by the articles in the paper, of the experiences that surrounding areas are facing, this is a very serious matter. On the east side of Wadsworth, probably the least expensive home purchasable right now is $400,000, and that's about 1,000 square feet. Once these houses are scraped, don't often do a single home, they do a duplex, such as North Denver, each side costing at least $600,000. I think this is a major concern. I really address the fact that the importance of this being in the newspaper for all citizens to be aware of the existence of this matter. This 35-foot flat roof allowance was put into effect when Wheat Ridge became a city in 1969. I've lived here for 50 years and didn't even know it existed. So I imagine there aren't many people out there who do know this exists. Please, I'm asking you to place articles in the paper making citizens aware of this situation and the meeting on November the 20th. And I thank you for your diligence in this matter.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you, Dorothy. Maureen Daly?
Hello, Maureen Daly, D-A-L-Y, 3620 Otis Street. It's been a while since we talked about 300. I'm here today, I'm urging you to appeal the judge's decision regarding ballot 300. When the wishes of your constituents are unknown, you as city council members must make the best decision you can, based on what you believe is the will of the people as you represent us. This decision around 300 and appealing it is different, however, because you know from the 2015 election that the majority of Wheat Ridge residents want 300. I ask you to represent the wishes of the majority, regardless of your personal views, and appeal it. Appeal the judge's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up for tonight on, on items that are not specifically on the agenda, even though the last one was part of the executive session at the end. So we're going to move on to item number one. Ms. Wooden, I believe you're the...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number one is Resolution Number 34-2017, a resolution concerning the proposed redevelopment at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Jealouson Street, authorizing a cooperation agreement pertaining to the collection of tax increment financing, TIF. At issue, Renewal Wheat Ridge, RWR, the urban renewal authority for the city of Wheat Ridge, negotiated a redevelopment agreement with the Shared Family Trust for a commercially-zoned redevelopment project at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Jealouson Street. The owner has requested financial assistance in the amount of $767,383 for eligible improvements related to the project. Property and sales tax increment generated by the project will be used to fund this request. A cooperation agreement between RWR and the city is required that details the intent of the proceeds and obligations of both parties as it relates to the collection of sales tax increment.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm open that public hearing, and we're going to have a staff presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As you know, we came before you at a study session last week regarding this project. If this project is approved, we will provide a tax increment financing agreement in the amount of $767,383. Tonight's action is requirement for you to approve a cooperation agreement. And what a cooperation agreement does is, it is the mechanism to allow that local sales tax that is passed on upon purchase, that is remitted by the business to the city, to then be, then taken and given to Renewal Wheat Ridge for the, the agreement to satisfy the terms of that agreement. With this agreement, the cooperation agreement, you will be forgiving one and a half cent of your local 3-cent sales tax. At your study session, you did have some questions regarding the base of that, and the base is, can be calculated into the, the amount of that. I do have Tim Morzell from EPS here tonight, who can detail your requests from last week as we go along. Just to give you a little background on the project, the project is, as member Wooden said, is at the corner of 44th and Jealouson Street. It was originally the site of just a vacant home on an empty plot of land. The Shearards, the owner of the Swiss Flower and Gift Cottage, purchased the property approximately a year ago, scraped the house, and began for development of this project. This project will be broken into three phases. The initial phase will build about a 19,800-square-foot building on the site. That will be the new house for Swiss Flower and Gift Cottage, a two-story building that will sell most of their products. The existing building will still stay in existence. It will sell larger products, such as furniture, larger garden objects that are on there. The new building has some artistic features that the city requested when it came upon, and these are part of that base that we said were eligible public improvements. Additional elementation on buildings is permitted by urban renewal law to be included in, in the calculations. Phase two of the project, actually, you know, I said the total project, the total project is 19,800 square feet. The first phase, phase one, is about 6,600 square feet of building, and I apologize for that. Phase two will include about 6,000 square feet behind that two-story building. That will be the first phase of what we're calling maker space. It will be light industrial space back there that could house artists in there to help make product that would be displayed in Swiss Flower and Gift Cottage. It could have other uses within that realm, but we really envision that to be a maker space. Phase three of that project will be approximately 7,200 square feet of additional maker space. The project hopes to build that all in one phase, but they're dividing into three phases. It will complete in about the year 2025 to complete all three phases. Because it is a three-phase product, project, the TIF will be divided into three separate TIFs, in fact. So if phase one completes and phase two doesn't complete, they will not receive a TIF for phase two and three. It's only upon completion of, of each of those along there. This is truly, as I explained to you last week, what Urban Renewal set out to do when it was initiated in the state. This is really helping a home-based business. This is a business that's been here since 1969, started by Heidi's parents, and she has taken over the business. And I think anyone who has been in there knows the quality of the product in there. And I encourage anyone who's never been in there to visit the site. It is one of the best gift-buying experiences you can have anywhere I've ever been. It is truly a home-run, family-run business, and Heidi really now is taking this to the next level with the development of this project. With that, I'd invite Tim Morzell up here from EPS, unless you have any specific questions for me, to detail your request about what the impacts are if we use a base. So just for those at home watching, or those of you on the phone who may not know, a base is you take the previous 12 months of sales tax increment, and that sets your base, so it's a per-month that we would set. And in order for the project to receive any TIF, any sales tax, tax increment financing, they would first have to reach that base, and then it's anything above that base that would be then given back to the project to help in that project. Mr. Morzell, I'll turn on the projector for you, it's all yours.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. We'll just get this up and running. But as Steve mentioned, there were a number of questions during the study session, the city council study session that was last Monday, specifically related to how the base is treated, and how, and what it would be if it was included in the calculations. The analysis presented to you at that meeting did not include any estimate of base, and tonight I will be able to show you what the project would produce in terms of sales tax revenue for the city with and without the base, and what that translates to in terms of a contribution to the project. I also have handouts, yes. Oh, it's coming up. So the first table I wanted to walk through with you shows sales tax revenue to the city that would be generated by the project with and without a base calculation. The columns on the left-hand side are essentially the original calculations, and show sales tax revenue without a base. And so those started about $21,000 in sales tax revenue, and increase up to $44,000 in annual sales tax revenue in 2030. At that point, the phase one of the project reaches its cap, and the city will receive 100% of sales tax for the remainder of the TIF and thereafter, which is approximately $71,000, starting in 2031, and ramping up to $85,000 in 2040. In total, that equates to approximately $1.16 million over the 2019 to 2040 period. The second column, or essentially the column in the middle, shows what the property generates with a base calculation. So based on the sales tax collected in 2016, which is anticipated to be relatively similar to what the project will generate in 2017, we estimated that the base would be, the annual base sales tax revenue would be set at $16,160. And the remain, the sales above that would essentially be split, 50% going to the project and 50% going to the city. So that translates to approximately $11,400 going to the city in the first year that sales tax is generated, which sent ramps up to approximately $41,000 in 2032. In total, that equates to approximately $1.22 million. And so looking at the difference between those over the 12- to 13-year period, it translates to approximately $67,000 that the city would receive if a base was included. The, I have two other tables that I want to run through with you. The first one is the revenues that the Swiss Flower Shop would receive without the sales tax base. So this is essentially what we went through last week with a couple minor revisions that were necessary to include a base calculation. And because we calculated the project contribution and need on a static level, adding a base essentially just pushes out the number of years that the project receives, sales tax contributions from the city. So without a sales tax base, the project hits that cap in 2030 and caps out at about $695,000 in project contribution, which represents property, property tax and sales tax. Jumping to what that looks like, with a sales tax base, it essentially gets pushed to 2032, just with smaller cash flows, essentially in the first few years, which then the gap shrinks as it gets closer to that 2032 end date. So, you know, while the total contribution to the project is the same with and without sales tax base, the annual cash flows, the annual average cash flows are lower. And when you take into account the time value of money, which this analysis does not, it represents a burden on the project. So with that, I'll open it up to any additional questions you might have in terms of sales tax base, and how and why that might be included.
Additional questions for Tim?
Can you flip to the previous slide? Okay, so it's two years difference, pushes it two years.
Correct.
Anyone else?
I think I asked a lot of my questions at the study session.
I have a question. The participant is, has made a statement that they're bill, sell of larger retail items. Will that be after the building, the new building is built? Will, will the new building have the regular retail line? And then the other building will hold the larger items? I'm just kind of wondering when that phase comes in.
I could let Heidi respond to that.
That'd be great.
I think she has a much clearer idea of what they're doing.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Hello, Heidi. My vision is to have the existing space, have more of the larger pieces, be able to bring in furniture pieces that obviously, right now, are hidden amongst all of the other gems that are in there, but to have a space that's more, almost like backstock, being able to bring in other artist-type things as well, painters, potters, things of that nature that can showcase in that space that would stand on their own and be another resource for people looking for that type of gift and items that I have already in the, the new building, if that makes sense. So that's, that's kind of the direction that I'm seeing that space.
So the newer building would have more of the items that you have now?
New building is going to have everything that is in the shop.
Would move over there.
Okay. The existing building, which has such great energy and love in it, will have history in it, will have larger pieces, and be able to bring in other artist-type pieces. More like a gallery, in a sense?
Right.
Think of it that way?
And you hope to, intend to have some of the artisans have actually dwelling, working, I don't know, just working spaces, I think?
Well, I think what would be ideal, in my vision of how this should go, is that this will be almost a stepping stone to have those artists become known in the existing space and learn to be successful, and then it would make sense for them to then have their own space in what I see that first phase, or the second phase technically being, is more of a art district, is really what I'd like to see that become. Wouldn't that be cool?
Would be very cool, I know.
Yes?
So just a quick question. So you, so it sounds like the artists could possibly sell their, their items, perhaps, in their space? Not necessarily like consignment, or, or in your space? Or would it maybe be a little bit of both?
I, I think that artists, the platform of the existing shop would probably showcase their pieces better in the existing space.
Okay.
Personally.
So they would have it more there in your, in the existing little flowers?
Yeah, almost like their mini galleries.
Right.
Yeah, you know, kind of the way the rooms are set up. I think it sets itself up very nicely to accommodate that.
Any other, any questions, council? Mr. Urban?
Not of her, but possibly of Steve.
I, I believe, thank you.
You're done with me?
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Steve, uh, Tim, excuse me, wasn't it, Tim?
Steve, Tim, excuse me, wasn't it, Tim?
No.
Mr. Urban has no questions?
No, just questions for Steve.
Oh, Steve, for Steve Art, okay. Go ahead.
The, as it relates to the presentation to the Urban Renewal Authority, the eligible costs were listed as facade beautification costs and now that's defined as eligible building costs. And I guess my question is, as it relates to the Kipling Urban Renewal Plan and the specific public improvement objectives in the plan, how does an eligible building cost fit into that public improvement objective list that the Urban Renewal Plan provides?
Within Urban Renewal Law, that plan provides that if additional elements are requested that would go above and beyond what they would have put on their original building, that that is an eligible cost. More enhancement, we have certainly done that with many other buildings when we built the Kipling Ridge Shopping Center, there, some of their facade was eligible also because we had asked for additional brick on their building, which they had not put in their additional plans, which was not in their additional performer, and it is permitted through Urban Renewal Law to include those costs.
I'm well aware that the Urban Renewal Law as a state statute provides for specific categories of eligible costs. My question is, as the Kipling Urban Renewal Plan breaks down the specific public investment objectives, when it lists streetscape and public improvements related to infrastructure, but it doesn't list and it specifically excludes site modifications to private property. So my question is, as it relates to the eligible building costs, how does eligible building costs not fall into the category of modification, site modifications to private property?
Well, I don't have a specific answer for you, Mr. Urban, at this point. I can certainly look into that, but even if we took away these eligible building costs, the public improvements still exceed what the TIF is being provided for.
Are you complete?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, I have one question because I know in the motion, it's about approving the agreement.
Cooperation agreement.
The cooperation agreement, but it's really not about with or without the tax base. So is that supposed to be a part of the motion as well, or I guess that's really not in the packet? So it's hard to take what we saw on the slideshow and then also look at the packet that we were given. So I guess just some guidance on what you want the Council to...
Our original vision was that we would set the base at zero because this is a brand-new project area, planned area activity that has no current sales tax being done. That's the new Jellison and 44 site. If it is Council wishes that they would like to set the base, we can certainly amend it to include the base, as we have on other projects throughout the city. The Kipling Ridge project had a base set to it. So upon Council wishes, but our initial calculations that EPS ran were with no base at all.
So the current motion in the packet is just, is about the cooperation agreement, doesn't really talk about...
The base.
The base.
Correct. We could certainly amend that if you would care to add in the base.
You need to...
Madam Mayor, you do have one person signed up to testify. You know that.
I'm winning this discussion and then we'll go to the public comment.
Madam Mayor. As it relates to the base, as we've sort of gone through this, it doesn't appear to jeopardize the project to include the base, and I understand that it does sort of extend out the process somewhat as it relates to the project. But as much as we are focused on this specific agreement and this specific project, and I think this project is a definite win for the city, I think that as it relates to including a base, that is a consistent policy the city has had with respect to these types of agreements and carrying forward and making sure that future agreements don't look back at this and say, "Well, you didn't include a base on this one. Why should we have to include a base on our agreement?" That's my concern as it relates to this, that we include a base just to be consistent in our application of these types of agreements across various projects and not related specifically to this project and knowing that including a base doesn't jeopardize the agreement, but rather strengthens it and keeps it from being an exception to the rule.
Further discussion on that? Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, as it relates to the base, I'm more for not including the base because, like it was stated, it's a brand-new building. So if Heidi had another business, but instead of it being right next door, it was on the other side of town, then would we be considering a base because her other business is on the other side of town? Just because it's right next door doesn't mean that she should then have to utilize that sales tax information on a brand-new project with a brand-new building.
I have to get through this person first. Ms. Davis?
So I've done a lot of homework on this and I know as we've had public comment today that TIF is a very important aspect of our city and it's also a very heavily scrutinized part of our city. And, you know, I hear some of the comments have said, "Yes, it's not, it's not on that property, but it's next door and there will not be," from my understanding, "point of sale on the old property." So all sales will be going to the new property. So basically, the base that we show here is going to be zero at the old property. So it's kind of hard to say that, you know, compared to kind of going across town because it's right next door and it's going to be the same register that collects dollars. I also, you know, I support it. I think that it's something we need to do. I think it pushes it back a little, adding the base, but again, I look at the success that we had or that Wheat Ridge Recyclerie had, that it actually was finished five years earlier, and I hope the same for Swiss Flower Shop. But I do think that from a city who also needs tax revenues, that to totally get rid of a base that we're used to having and splitting it, I don't know that I support that as well. I do support this project and I support it with a base because it's, again, as Mr. Urban also said, very consistent with what we've done with some of our other, our other...
Projects.
Agreements, yeah.
I'm going to call for the, we've had a request for public comment on that, so you guys can sort of think about that. Vi Voss, you had signed up for public comment on this item?
It's Vivian Voss.
Thank you. I always forget that. Call her Vi.
Vivian Voss, V O S six nine two zero, West 47th Place. Well, this is a little bit of a gray area in that we have two TIFs, one in executive session and one on this. So I'm not really speaking directly to Resolution 34-2017 and if I can be permitted to move forward with my thoughts in TIFs in general and as it relates to both of these subjects in tonight's conversation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I got a nod from down there.
While tonight's meeting includes two TIF subjects, I found it quite a coincidence that this weekend in the Denver Post, there was an editorial of a $30 land deal in Arvada. It's years of sweetheart deals for developers. It's not just the $30 land deal. So I will be giving you a copy of the full article, but I just wanted to hit some points, not taken out of context, but rather highlighted. This is by David Chandler, who is an Arvada resident. Nine acres of publicly-owned prime real estate in a hot market is to be sold for $30 and the sales and property tax revenue until 2034 rebated to the developer. This only highlights a much bigger problem. Unelected urban renewal, as this relates to Arvada, excuse me, as this relates to Arvada, you could insert any city in the state of Colorado. Unelected urban renewal board and the city councils have committed to giving away nearly tax revenue and land to private for-profit corporations and developers. From all these land values through manipulation, there has been a spree of manipulating and distorting the free market with taxpayer dollars. Not only did the city of Wheat Ridge vote on ballot 300, but in 2016, the city Arvada put a sales tax hike on the ballot, which was defeated by the citizens. Voters wisely turned down the tax hike. A large amount of giveaways doesn't have the revenue required for basic services like keeping the streets in good order. And if they've given away all this money to special private businesses, then why can't they afford to keep the streets and basic services up and running? So while you are paying sales tax on bananas, a box of cereal, or a new school backpack to support police, water and sewer services and parks, the developers and businesses with sweetheart deals are rebated, the taxes collected, getting a free ride on city services. The whole state is in a remarkable burst of economic growth. We don't need government handouts to entice them to open businesses and build in our communities. Every city is a wonderful place and new developers and businesses ought to be paying us to locate So I would encourage growth and progress for every community, but that can be fully compatible with fiscal responsibility. So as you go into executive session, I urge you to support, as Wheat Ridge has voted, most of the citizens, and remember that it's more than eight of you that is under consideration here as to what happens to the rest of us. And please make sure that even a small developer needs to be legal to the urban renewal laws and let's not make any further abuses going forward. Thank you, and I'll be passing, you can have the full article here.
Thank you, Vivian.
Thank you.
Okay, I think let's move on to a motion which will need to be, go forward and discuss it more after the motion.
Sure.
And you understand the motion as it's stated is without a base and if you want to add a base, you have to change that.
I'm going to read it as is. I move to approve Resolution Number 34-2017, a resolution concerning the proposed redevelopment at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Jellison Street, authorizing a cooperation agreement pertaining to the collection of tax increment financing. Second.
Was that Ms. Hoppe? Hoppe, okay. Any discussion at this point now? More discussion? Please cast your vote.
No, wait.
All right, go ahead.
I guess just going back to Mr. Art's suggestion that the total costs involved in the project far exceed the eligible costs within the Urban Renewal Authority sort of law far exceed what the TIF amount is. I'm looking at one of the whereas clauses and it indicates that these revenues are to finance public infrastructure that benefits the urban renewal area pursuant to the cooperation agreement. And so if this is to finance public infrastructure and that's what we're passing, I still don't see how the facade beautification or the building improvements would fit under a public infrastructure definition. And so I would ask that, is it plausible to exclude those hard building costs of facade beautification from the eligible costs? Because I'm just not seeing how those are well-defined within the Urban Renewal Plan itself and as it relates to the whereas clause in the agreement that we're passing here.
This is in regard to the cooperation agreement, though. I don't know if this would be proper to be separating costs within, Ms. Wooden?
That would require us to just go back to the Urban Renewal Authority and to amend that redevelopment agreement to remove that cost. I'm looking at Mr. Marzell and it should not affect us. So we could certainly, again, you're, tonight, you're not talking about, as the mayor just said, you're not talking specifically about the redevelopment agreement, which states that cost. You're talking about the cooperation agreement, but we could certainly go back to the Urban Renewal Authority with an amendment to remove that.
And it's not to say that I don't want to see this property redeveloped. I do. And I think that in order to keep this agreement as solid as possible, it's important that if we're passing a resolution that says we're to finance public infrastructure, I don't, I'm just having a hard time seeing how that's the case, that the private property facade beautification elements don't really fit into that definition. So that would help me to at least know that as much as we have a lot of other eligible costs that are included in here, and I do see quite a few, it would help to know that at least those hard costs related to that private property are not included in that, so.
And just find, these costs were reviewed by our Urban Renewal attorney and found to be eligible costs, which did adhere to the plan. But we could certainly do that if that is the wish of the Council.
Mr. Matthews?
Are these consistent, to your knowledge, with improvement, eligible improvement costs that we've done in the past, including to Wheat Ridge Recyclerie?
Correct.
Okay, I don't believe this is the correct venue right now to go back and try and redefine what's eligible and what's not eligible. It's consistent with what's been done in the past and so there again, I don't think we should punish the current developers in trying to make them the test case, if you will, for redoing renewal law. I think there are a lot of things statewide that maybe need to change with urban renewal law, but I don't think this would be the place or the time to do it. I think they're, they've, they have gone through the process with the same due diligence that we've approved on past projects and we ought to accept that. And then if we want to change the rules or change the process, do that as a separate issue.
Ms. Wooden?
First of all, I'd like to point out that Mr. Art did just tell us that this has already been reviewed by the attorney. So it's nothing different, it's nothing new. And remember that on the corner of 38th and Wadsworth, it was pointed out to us that the TIF actually encourages the city and helps the city in that we can, we can put a little bit more input into what these buildings are going to look like. So at the corner that they're building on, in which they're taking a huge financial risk doing this, do we want to see a lot with a vacant house? Or do we want a business we can use and enjoy? And that's going to bring in sales tax revenue. So this is where the city's going to say, "Hey, we want something we can use. We want it to look nice." And so if these are improvements that fall under what the urban renewal and the city, the attorney for urban renewal has approved, I don't see why we're going to nitpick it. There's no reason for it. We are, actually, I'm personally thankful that this business owner wants to do something there. It's a vacant lot right now. I mean, there was a house on it, but it's torn down. Now it's a vacant lot. And now this person is taking a risk to make something out of it. So let's help her, let's not hinder them. Let's help them make a successful business. And this has already been reviewed by urban renewal and I say, "Let's move forward," and I wish them the best because they are taking a huge personal risk regardless of this TIF. But this is the city saying, "Yes, this is the kind of city we want. Yes, these are the kind of businesses we want. And we are going to recognize that while we are helping them in the beginning, that we're going to reap along the way and also at the end." So this is a win for the city. It isn't a loss and I again thank the business owner for taking the risk.
I've got Mr. in first.
Thank you. I have to say that I think each project has to be looked at individually and I think Swiss Flowers has been here for decades. They are willing to invest in this corner. I think trying to, I agree, trying to critique or nitpick and, you know, remove this, add this, I think gives the wrong message. I'm supporting this project. I think we need to do it without a base. I support doing it without a base. Let's, let's help them, let's support them, let's embrace them. I think they're really lifting up that area of the community, and it's something positive. That's how I feel about this, so I hope we move forward with it like that. Thank you.
Mr. Pond.
Thank you, and thank you for the discussion. Thank you for the work on all sides, and thank you to the applicants for your business and the effort. I will be voting yes for this, and still in support. I just wanted to kind of clear up one thing, just some of the discussion that we've been having, the way I interpret it, we can argue a little bit about what's eligible or not, but I think, and I'll just clarify this, that what Mr. Art was saying, that right now, eligible project costs that have been identified in Phase 1 are $1.2 million. There's a list of things, it's a list. It doesn't mean that all of these things were going to be taken, because in fact, I believe that Phase 1 TIF request is, as shown on our, on our literature here in our packet and on the screen, I believe, $695,000. So in fact, the point is, is that for all intents, you can say that it's not, we're not really applying the eligible cost there, because we're far under those. So I think that's the point. It's, I think it's good to, it's fine to debate about it, but the truth is, is that there's plenty more eligible costs than actually what this applicant is asking for based on the agreement. I agree with this agreement as presented in this packet, and I'll be voting yes.
Mr. Urban, do you have a new question or new information for us?
Yes. So I would like, I don't know what the proper procedure would be, I believe that this would be the proper time to request an amendment for a sales tax base to be included in the agreement. Would that be correct?
This is the cooperative.
It's in order to make an amendment to the, to the motion with the first and second.
So I would move that a, a sales tax base be included in the calculation as it relates to the cooperative agreement.
Okay.
Second.
Second in. So amendment has been made to include the, the sales tax base as part of the cooperative agreement. Could I, is there any discussion on that?
Again, I think this has gone through the urban renewal process, and somewhere back then, we should have caught this. If this means going back and starting from the beginning again, I would be totally against the amendment.
Mr. Fisher.
I will vote for the amendment. I, I think the precedent is a factor here. And as far as I can determine, the only real difference here is time, two years, is otherwise there's no difference in the outcome. So I think the amendment is reasonable, and I'll vote for it.
I believe Ms. Hoppy would be next.
Like I stated earlier, I am not for including a base. I do understand that these are, if we included a base, that we would have a few extra dollars in our coffers in sales tax. However, I believe this project is worth the expense of not including the base. I think it's worth spending the money on. And when we look at our budgets and whatnot, this is an important issue for us to spend our money on, and I'm very excited, again, I'd like to say thank you again, Swiss Flower, for taking this on. And I think us having things like Makerspaces and a nice, a very nice kind of concrete, like centered corner over there will be really great for 44th Avenue.
Mr. Pond.
I'll be voting no on the amendment. And I, and I understand the, the request, and I don't necessarily disagree with all the points. I will say that I don't, I'm not convinced that we've totally studied the precedent on this, and in fact, that there's such a strong precedent that, that this is something critical. We look at each one of these agreements, and, and they're, they are, they run through several different vetting processes, and they are all unique. And so I, you know, at the heart of this is, do we disagree, I suppose the heart of it for me is, do I disagree with the, with the request to, to have a zero base and the logic of that? I don't, I don't disagree with that, I'm okay with it as is, and I do feel in some ways just kind of moving through, through this. And if it was perhaps much more dramatic than the two years, I'd feel differently. But I'm okay as it is, and because of that, I'm just, I'm not going to vote for this amendment.
Madam Mayor. I haven't spoken on this yet.
You wouldn't introduce it.
Right, but I didn't.
You spoke on it then.
I just introduced it, but I didn't discuss it. As it relates to amending this agreement to include a base, it goes in line with some of the previous comments that I've had as it relates to the costs. And, and all those efforts that I've made here are to make this agreement as strong as possible, because I want this project to succeed. I, I'm not nitpicking this to see it fail. I'm, I'm doing this in an effort to make sure it's as strong as possible, so that there isn't any ability down the road to look back on this and say, why is this different from the other agreements that we've had in the past? And that is the, the intent behind either my questioning of the costs or my request for an amendment as it relates to the inclusion of the base. And so that this plan and this agreement is both consistent with prior agreements that we have, and is also an ability to be used as a standard for other small businesses in Wheat Ridge that we can encourage to do the same, so that we can again use TIF smartly and appropriately in a local setting to promote and encourage small businesses like Swiss Flower Shop to continue to grow in our city. And I think this is a good example of what urban renewal should be used for, is to encourage the continued growth and vitality of a company like Swiss Flower. So that's, again, the reason behind this amendment, and I think by doing that, it makes this agreement much stronger and much more impervious to future objections. So that's my purpose in doing that, is to make it as strong as possible, and that, that was my intent.
Ms. Duran.
I just want to say again that I support the project, I won't support the amendment. I feel each project needs to be looked at uniquely, each one is different, so you can't just lump them all into one lump. So I will be voting no on this amendment. Thank you.
I believe it's time to take the vote on.
Can I talk for a minute? Sorry. Steve, there was a question about what renewal Wheat Ridge decided, and I think there was a discussion at the meeting that it was something that, it was not actually clear that we always use a base or not, just like our study session, you said, at council meeting, that there was never a base used on sales tax, just on property tax. I mean, I just want to clear things up, because one, I do support this project, so I think by changing it to having a base does by all means not mean that I don't support the project. But I guess if it's not in my tone, you can probably hear my frustration, because I think that a couple of us that are questioning the base are, are, you know, looking to, that, oh, it's, it's something that renewal Wheat Ridge really talked about, and I think what we talked about was, we talked about the two options and how it would be different with the city. So renewal Wheat Ridge did not recommend one or the other, if I recall correctly. So I don't think that this was presented correctly from a renewal Wheat Ridge standpoint, because I think what they asked was, we'll let the city decide as far as if they need that tax income or not, if they were going to have a base or no base. So I don't think this was fairly presented tonight. It is a project that I support regardless if there's a base or no base, but, you know, I'm just looking at some successful projects that we've had. Wheat Ridge Cyclory paid off five years early, so even though we talk about the two-year difference, there potentially could be a two- or three-year difference going the positive way. So I, you know, I think that I would like to have a little word from you as far as, from some of what renewal Wheat Ridge said, because this is not presented how we requested it to be from our meeting.
And, and you are correct, and I apologize. When I mentioned at the council meeting last week that base was not calculated, I was incorrect in that. Base has been calculated, and base can be part of it. As we expressed in urban renewal, because the project is being built on a site that has zero base now, it could go either way. Because our, our board first questioned, well, because now you're going to have two businesses, because the existing one's still going to be operating, how do you divide out that sales within that? And we were explained from our legal authority that you can set the basis zero, because all point of sales will be occurring at the new site, and the existing site is already within an urban renewal plan area, so you could set that base however you calculate it at. Again, as, as Councilwoman Davis said, no, at no point did urban renewal ever say, here's what we think council ought to recommend, and I apologize if I presented it to you that way. It certainly is, is your decision on how you want to move forward with that, whether you want to present base or no base in there. But would you agree, Kristi, that they had no decision on whether it should or should not be?
Right, because I think we were, urban renewal was kind of presented with a no base, and then the question came up. And so what we had kind of said was that, it was my understanding that both were going to be presented tonight, and then the council could decide. So that was my understanding.
And you also presented that at our study session, that you would like it presented with base or without, so that's when we started that calculation.
Yeah, at the study session, it was that we didn't have a base, though.
Correct.
And then corrected.
I believe we're ready for the vote now on the amendment? And this, you're devoting on the amendment to do the cooperative agreement with, without a base? No, with a base, with a base, yes.
With a base.
Could the amendment please be restated?
I would request that the cooperation agreement be amended to include a sales tax base in the calculation.
So a yes would mean be included, a no would be not.
I cleared, I cleared the board, so make sure you vote again. The motion fails three to five with council members, Wooden, Matthews, Pond, Hoppy, and Duran voting no.
Thank you. No, let's move on to the main motion then.
I think we already said the main motion. I can restate it, though, if we want. Do you want it restated?
Yeah, at this point, yes.
Okay, the main motion is, I move to approve Resolution Number 34-2017, a resolution concerning the proposed redevelopment at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Jealouson Street, authorizing a cooperation agreement pertaining to the collection of sales tax increment financing.
And we had a second on it, wasn't it? Ms. Hoppy, you have a second on it? If there's no further discussion, you can vote on that main motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Congratulations, Swift family. Their cooperative agreement has been given the yes, and thank you for your faith in our city, and that you're going to be adding to a very, very attractive shop, and an investment, really, in our city. So thank you very much. Item number two. Wow, we were that long on number one? Holy cow, it's going to be a long night. Item number two, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to present Resolution Number 36-2017, a resolution approving an employee screening agreement with the Jefferson County Communications Center Authority. At issue, the Jefferson County Communications Center Authority, JeffCom, anticipates being operational in the first quarter of 2018 to assist with the transition of 9/11 dispatching services to new regional communications authority. JeffCom has agreed to recruit, screen, and prequalify candidates for call taker and dispatcher positions for member agencies who wish to participate in this program.
Chief, do we have any discussion on this?
Second. Was that a movement? No, he's just.
This, we read, and then we have staff reports. Did you want to make any comments?
Just in the interest of time, JeffCom is, is moving along, it's picking up a lot of steam. They, the executive director and his staff have agreed to do all of the recruitments and the selection and testing processes for call takers and dispatchers. That's a process that we do two to three times a year. We're not fully staffed. At this time, we just lost dispatcher who'd come to us from another state and decided that she wanted to go home. She missed where she was originally from, so we're four positions down right now. This would not only save us staff time and dollars from a testing perspective, but would allow us to get prequalified candidates in to interview. The backgrounds will have been completed, we'll have the opportunity to review all that, and get people onboarded and into field training sooner rather than later. Some of you might ask, well, what does that look like from a training perspective if JeffCom becomes operational in the first quarter of 2018? All the employees that are with the city of, that are employed by the city of Wheat Ridge are going to be offered employment with JeffCom. Those letters are anticipated to go out this October, and employees will signify whether or not they want to be employees of JeffCom. And if they are, they'll sign, actually sign up for benefits with JeffCom, and we anticipate them becoming employees of JeffCom in January, although they'll still be working in our center and the other seven centers until all agencies transition. The initial plan is for agencies to start transitioning in February and to complete that in April. And, you know, our anticipation is, you know, there, there's always something that'll come up and, you know, that you haven't planned for, but the plan right now is to be operational, you know, by the end of the first quarter or no later than the middle of 2018. So this is a good thing, I think, for us. It'll save us staff time and dollars from a recruitment selection perspective.
Thank you. Any questions of the chief of police here?
Madam Mayor, as it relates to our current employees, just so I'm clear, the screening process defined in here would be applied to our current employees before or after they're offered that position, or?
Current employees won't have to go through a screening process, they're already employed by us, so any dispatch employee of the eight participating agencies will not have to go through a screening process. They will simply be offered letters of employment.
And then is there any sort of indication, as it relates to JeffCom, the individuals who are answering those calls, do they know anything about Wheat Ridge? Or how do, how do they have sort of geographic knowledge of the area that they're receiving calls from?
Right, that's, that's a, that's a good question. There's a, there's a lot of training that's going to occur between now and when the center goes operational. We act, we now have three operations managers that are, that are working full-time to put together all the policies, procedures, training requirements for new CAD, training requirements for the new center, what needs to occur. So geography, the unique culture of, of each of the agencies, each of the agencies will be incorporated into that training.
Thank you.
We don't have any public comment on this one. I believe a motion is in order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve, approve Resolution Number 36-2017, a resolution approving an employee screening agreement with the Jefferson County Communications Center Authority.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matthews. I don't see any occasion of discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, moving on to item number three. Mr. Dahl is going to have a comment or two, unless we go ahead and read first. Who is doing, Ms. Davis?
Go ahead, Mary Deishu, thanks.
All right, thank you. Reconsideration of the mayoral appointment of Kevin Hood to the vacant District 4 seat on the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority doing business renewal Wheat Ridge term to expire November 30th, 2021.
Well, as the material's saying, as you're aware, the code requires that appointments to the Urban Renewal Authority to be successful have to get a majority of the entire council, so that's five votes. And in this particular case, while the motion passed, did not acquire the required five votes, so it failed. It was a proper motion for reconsideration made and passed to set it for reconsideration for tonight's meeting. Under your council rules, you, that you have now accomplished what it requires in terms of time, that reconsideration be asked for and granted either at that meeting or the next one. And as it turns out, the reconsideration was approved at the last meeting, so now it's set for tonight, and it's your authority to set a substantive vote whenever you like. We've put in the packet the appropriate motions for you. We've put in the packet the appropriate motions for you. The, there were obviously three council members absent, council members Pond, Davis, and Matthews. The council rules require that if you were absent from the meeting when it was discussed, you can vote on the substantive matter if, says, the council member affirms on the record that he or she has listened to the recording of that agenda item. So you'll need, those members that, that weren't here will either need to affirm that that was the case, or if not, they won't be able to participate, or obviously the council can choose by a regular vote of everyone if it wishes to reschedule that, the vote on that matter. You also have the right to waive the council rules and vote, vote tonight, or don't waive them, don't reschedule, and still vote. But in that event, it will mean that whatever council members haven't listened to the tape won't be able to vote.
Okay. There is something that I do want to add to this. If we understand what, what need to do, the three members who were not here two weeks ago, I'll ask each one of you whether you did listen to the tape, and you did, and Ms. Davis, you did not, and...
Did not.
Did not. So we need to either reschedule or change the council, or we need to...
Ask to waive the council.
Ask to waive the council rules. But what I wanted to add is that the applicant is here with us tonight. He's come especially to be, to meet, and I would like to make sure that he gets an opportunity to speak before the council. If that's okay with the council, I will have him come forward at this point. Mr. Hood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, I, my name's Kevin Hood. I've lived in the city of Wheat Ridge over a collective period of about 18 years. My dad grew up here in Wheat Ridge on Ames Street, and I participated on the board for local works, served as the president there. Guess the reason that I'm interested is I feel like I'm a passionate, interested Wheat Ridge person, and I don't claim necessarily to have specialized knowledge in the world of urban renewal, but I'm, I'm by nature a curious person. I think I ask good questions, and I think I have the ability to, to deliver sometimes hard questions in a way that other people can hear and, and can open up dialogue. I'm a lifelong learner. I've served on a number of boards. I currently serve on the board in the Executive Committee of the Colorado Golf Hall of Fame, and remain active in local works as a volunteer on the Real Estate Committee and on Act of Eight Thirty-Eight. Most recently, I was at Cherry Hills Country Club as their general manager and chief operating officer for the last 10 years, actually the first, the last six as the operating officer, and before that as the operations director. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about my interest or my, my worthiness for the position.
Mr. Ann?
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for coming in and giving me an opportunity to meet you. You know, some other council members on here may have met you and know of you, but I hadn't. So I appreciate you coming in. Thank you so much, and I appreciate you wanting to serve. So thank you.
Ms. Davis?
I want to say thank you for coming in, and actually, you were at the Renewal Wheat Ridge meeting this last week, so thank you for attending that as well. I, if there's other questions for him, then I would like to add a request or a change to our council rules, so.
Okay. Mr. Pond, first, I think.
Well, no, I think she's going, going the same way.
Same direction?
Well, I'll let you do it.
So, yeah. Let's hear it from Mr. Pond.
I just, I want to thank you for coming in. I want to apologize for, for not getting, getting to it. I knew that there was a procedural limit, and, and I read the minutes, but clearly that's not enough, and I, and I know that, so I apologize for that, but I'll let Kristy summarize that and ask for some questions.
So I agree. My apologies, I read the minutes and had talked to some council about this coming back today, so I made sure I was informed, but didn't watch the video. So, Madam Mayor, I would like to request a change of council rules to allow those individuals who are not present at the last council meeting, if we had reviewed the minutes and, and the information, if we would be able to vote without viewing the video.
Second.
So you're wait, you'd like to waive the council rules? And we have a second there from Mr. Ann. Do we have any discussion on that?
Just, just a procedural reminder, it takes supermajority for this, for this vote.
Six votes is required.
Just so I heard that correctly, you're saying you've reviewed the minutes but not the tape?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Then please vote whether you'd like to waive the rules as far as...
That's... And who was the second?
Mr. Ann.
Let me clear the board, just to be sure. Okay, please vote.
Please go ahead and vote again.
This is on the change of rules. Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, then we can go forward and with the vote to ratify the selection, unless there's some other questions.
Thank you, council. I move to ratify the mayoral appointment of Kevin Hood to District Four of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Doing Business as Renewal Wheat Ridge term to expire November 30th, 2021. Second.
Seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Hood.
Thank you.
I think you'll make a nice addition to our city. Oh, let's see, have we got through it now? All right, we can go ahead, and city manager isn't with us. We have the chief as acting manager. Is there anything the chief as acting manager would like to say?
Just like to remind council and our citizens that city manager couldn't be here tonight. He is with our Parks Director, Joyce Manwaring, there at the Parks and Recreation Gold Medal Award meeting to determine whether or not Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation will be the Gold Medal Award winner. We were a finalist in our particular category, and we should know early tomorrow...
Wonderful.
...whether or not we were selected as the winner, but to be a finalist for such a prestigious award is quite an accomplishment, so see what they have to say tomorrow.
City attorney.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk.
I just wanted to remind folks, and I don't know which Wednesday it is, the Boards and Commissions Dinner is coming up, so you have a, a notice on that. What's that middle? Somebody got a calendar? That middle, yeah, I think, I think that sounds right. Anyway, I was supposed to remind you last meeting, and I didn't, so.
Yeah, it is the 18th.
October 18th.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let's go through the elected officials. I'm gonna start on the other end for this, just for the...
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, I've been asked to make a short announcement here that there is a, there's a Boy Scout troop over at Wheat Ridge Methodist Church, troop number 240. They were chartered in 1957. They're having an ice cream social and movie night sleepover for whoever wants to take a snooze with the troop.
A sleepover?
Yeah.
Boy Scouts sleepover.
Okay. Movie night, an ice cream social, and it'll be September 29th. They'll start at 6 o'clock, and then it'll last until 9:00 AM the next morning. They'd like to have anyone who would come out and learn more about the meaning of being a scout to come down. It's at Wheat Ridge Methodist Church at 38th and Vance, and you can contact the church or the scout master, and I'm not sure I want to put out his phone number, though, publicly. It's his private phone number.
Okay. Especially for the sleepover.
So you can call you.
Yeah. Call me, and I'll pass it on. But I'm sure they have that information at Wheat Ridge Methodist Church.
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Davis?
So I just have a quick question for Mr. Dahl and Ms. Shaver. I, I know there's been a couple of questions, and I'm not going to go into details or anything about campaigning information, and I guess my question would be, just so I have, understand the process, if those folks are emailing, asking questions, like how we should respond back, or will you be responding back to them, so that if we get questions? I guess that would be my question on that. I'm not going to go into details of what the question was, but I, I would just like to, you know, have it be answered, or, and if it's, you know, whatever the answer is, just so we all know.
I received a number of emails, and yours included, and I've contacted Mr. Dahl, and I believe he might have something to share with you all.
Yeah, I, I intend to supply appropriate guidance and answer to Janelle. I certainly go through details here, but what I'm hearing is you saying, pardon me, is you saying, will someone get back to them, is there a structure for that? And, yes.
Yeah, because my emails were just basically forwarding the emails that I've received, but I just...
I've assembled those and reviewed the information.
All right.
I'm prepared to, you know, create the information that Janelle can then distribute in answer to the inquiries that she gets. Yep.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Colorado Consortium for Prescription Drug Abuse Prevention has launched a new statewide initiative called Recovery Ready Colorado, and the purpose of this initiative is to remove the stigma from recovery process, to support people in recovery, and this strategically focuses on four areas or pillars, and that is to advocate for cultural change through public policy and community support. The pillars, the four pillars are suitable employment, safe, affordable housing, ability to achieve higher education, and access to recovery-related resources. And you can find Recovery Ready Colorado information on Facebook and take a pledge to join them in supporting those that are in recovery, and this is specifically related to the opioid addiction crisis currently affecting Colorado.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, then we have a statement here?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm gonna close the meeting. Oh, wait, we don't, we'll close it if you don't.
Before you close it, I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney, city manager, and appropriate staff under Charter Sections 5.7B1 and CRS 24-6-4024B to receive legal advice concerning the Longs Peak Metropolitan District litigation. I further move to adjourn the council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Can I put something in now, even though you've got a move?
I think that, that has to be seconded and voted on.
Seconded.
Seconded. All right. I, I just realized Coffee with the Mayor is a week, a week from this Saturday, and I may have two special guests. One, well, most of the memorial, the mayoral candidates will be at Coffee with the Mayor. All right.
You got a vote on this?
Moved, seconded.
Are you, I'm sorry, you're saying we need, we get to come back here after the meeting?
You'll come back here and look at...
Uh, no.
It's adjourned after, at, at the conclusion of the meeting.
I would, I would prefer we came back and adjourned our meeting officially here in front of the public.
It's absolutely up to the council. I'm happy to do that.
So you have to make an amendment?
I would make it, well, I...
No, I think...
I'm not gonna make an amendment, because it's gonna go one way or the other. I'm just saying, as a point of discussion on the motion, I would prefer we came back and adjourned here, but I'll be voting no on the motion.
You'd be voting no on the motion, okay. The motion to go into executive session, you're voting no.
Well...
And to adjourn.
And to adjourn our meeting...
Okay.
...in executive session.
Executive session. I guess... Okay, actually, so the vote will tell us whether, whether that's what is going to be?
Yeah.
So, go ahead and vote.
I have a question. Is this for transparency?
Yes.
Then I'd like to ask Mr. Dahl for transparency purposes to address Kristy's question earlier.
And I certainly can. You have a pending motion.
Okay. After that, let's discuss the other item.
We can, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
I'm happy to do that. What, what I might say is this. If the motion to go into executive session simply fails, then we'll go ahead and have the discussion about the Longs Peak, you know, case in public session, which is fine with me. I had thought that the request was, or the, as usual, when I set up executive session motions, there's always two choices, and I usually check the adjourn at the end of the executive session, don't reconvene box, because unless there's a formal council vote that needs to be taken, approve a contract, something like that, then if it's litigation, the law's clear that you can give me direction to proceed or not in a certain way with the case, and I do that, and I've done that for years. However, that doesn't mean that you always have to follow it that way, and one option is for you to, to, if I checked the other box, you would have had the executive session. I tell you about the case, we discuss it, you give me the direction that you're gonna give, and then we come out into regular session, and I just probably ask you to take a motion memorializing what direction you gave me in executive session, then we conclude the meeting. That avoids the, me giving you all the legal advice and having the discussion substantively in public session, but it does announce publicly what it is that you've directed me to do. So that's your other choice, and I'm not certain, Councilmember Matthews, if you were wanting that outcome or a different one.
Well, yeah, since we're going to possibly be giving you some direction, I think we need to come back here and have some discussion for the people. There's a lawsuit against the city, and I'm not in favor of just going out and hiding in the corner and telling, supposedly, even though we're not supposed to really make decisions in executive session, I understand this is kind of a gray area, but we're telling you to do something, and then hiding behind the cloak of secrecy of the executive session.
I don't think it's hiding behind the cloak. I think this is a legal matter that, for the protection of the city, that we may want to have that discussion. I mean, if, if you're going to have some kind of a court action, it would seem to me that you would want to have a certain measure of privacy around that decision to do.
If I may respond, though, whether we go left or right, that is going to become public information as soon as the attorney files paperwork, so I think we ought to be responsible on letting the people know how we came, you know, how that decision, to some extent, was derived.
And I'm, you know, honestly perfectly fine with that. Pardon me, still getting a recall. The, the main reason I would want the substantive discussion to be executive session is because there's, there's always, you know, there's a lot of gray, there's always pluses and minuses. When we're done with that, and I've got direction from you, it would be my intention, if, even if you didn't come back to regular session, to prepare some kind of statement, because I know there's public interest in what the city's gonna do, and I would absolutely have done that in any event. I will do that, kind of, whether or not, but I do understand the, the desire on the part of some to say, okay, we've had the discussion, now we're in an open meeting, let's, let's take a motion and direct the attorney to do this or to do that, and that's okay.
Comment?
So, Councilmember Matthews, is that your motion to go into executive disa, exec session, but to come back when we're done, and to make whatever direction we've given the city attorney public, correct?
Make it a formal motion.
Make it a formal motion?
Proceed one way or the other. I have no intentions to discussing this in private.
We have a motion on...
Okay, second that amendment, then.
Well, hold on, is, if it's an amendment, it needs to be...
Right, it's an amendment. I have some...
No, hold on.
A motion has been made in...
An amendment's in order.
Okay, Madam Chair. I move that we adjourn to, temporarily adjourn to a temporary session, and then reconvene after the executive session to take a formal motion and vote on how we are directing the attorney to proceed in the matter of this litigation.
Second.
It needs to be formed, I think, a little bit more specifically as an amendment, holding the first part of it that I read and, and essentially changing the second part of it.
Effectively, I think it, it does that. It probably does more than it honestly needs to to accomplish that, but I, I, I think, in fairness, the amendment's understandable. Was there a second to the amendment? There was? Discussion on that?
Does everybody understand it now, that we will go into executive session, have the discussion, come back here, and vote on...
If the amendment passes, and if the motion passes as amended. If the amendment passes and if the motion passes as amended.
Okay.
Right now, you're at discussion on the amendment, since it's been made and seconded. That's where you're at now.
Do we need a vote on the amendment?
Well, you're at discussion, you've had a motion, you've had an amendment that's been made and seconded, now you need discussion on the amendment. That's where you're at.
Okay, let's have further discussion on the amendment. Mr. Pond?
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciated that, actually. A couple of concerns, and I will either vote no on the amendment, or perhaps I'll hear my concerns handled, and I will vote yes on the amendment. I'm not opposed to coming, coming back here and having a vote the way you described, which is voting, voting the direction. What I don't want to do is get into a large discussion about why I come to that conclusion, or all the other things that essentially are why we're going into executive session in the first place. So, you know, my tendency is to essentially vote no for this, because I'm not sure that, you know, unless I really hear it, that we're going to adhere to that, and in fact, we're going to get into a discussion out here and start debating this, and, which is in fact not the right thing in my mind, and so unless I really am convinced otherwise, I will vote no on this amendment.
Might I respond to that, since I made the amendment? The simple solution is to simply come back here, and if discussion starts, call a question.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I will also be voting no on the question, on the question of the amendment. I do recognize that this will eventually become public knowledge, and I do recognize the utility of announcing it immediately afterwards, because people are interested. But by the time we come back, if we were to do that, the decision will have been made. So the only, I'm very afraid, as I think George was saying too, that this is sort of an underhanded way to try to get, to find out who voted how and violate the secrecy of an executive session.
I object to the term "underhanded." I believe that citizens have every right, and we have every responsibility to let them know who directed the attorney to go which way. I do not intend for us to come back here and rehash what we went through in executive session. I think that's privileged information. I have no problem with that. But I don't think we should make important decisions like that. They're going to be a matter of public record in the future without letting the citizens know which one of their elected representatives went left and which ones went right.
Other comments before we take the vote?
Mr. Dahl, you suggested before that we do, we could, if we wanted, do a statement at the end of executive session in there stating what the outcome was, and then that would be provided to the public.
Yes, and I would intend to do that, really, in any event.
Okay.
Especially if you don't come back to regular session, and everyone's going to want to know, and I would like the information to be, you know, clear, and so that it's, I would intend to put a little statement out that the city clerk can pass around.
Will you be presenting, will you be telling who in consensus at the session voted to go left and who voted to go right?
No.
That's what I'm saying. It's cloaked behind the secrecy of the executive session.
Any other comment before we vote?
You know, I really do take offense to being said that this is underhanded. There's nothing underhanded about this. This is our job. Our job is to represent our constituents. Whether you agree or disagree, I think they have a right to know what we are giving direction to the city attorney to do. So I'm not trying to be underhanded here. I'm just trying to be open and transparent.
I see a finger up.
I do. I have a slight comment. I remember a particular executive session that within 24 hours, the confidential information was public. Remember that one?
Well, now...
And so it's, it's kind of, I don't know what, what you're upset about, because...
Are you accusing me of leaking that?
I'm not accusing you of leaking it. I'm saying, I'm saying the information went public.
That's our responsibility to keep it quiet.
It is.
Can we call the question, please?
Yeah, let's call the question. Thank you. Please cast your votes on the amendment, whether...
Procedurally, the question's been called. We're voting on that and not on the amendment.
That would be correct.
You can't just have one person call the question. It has to be seconded and go to a vote.
That's correct. It's a privileged, it's a privileged motion, which takes precedent over any others, and so you vote on it right away about whether basically...
And I'm willing to second the motion to call the question.
Yeah, you're basically cutting off debate on the amendment.
So we're voting on the amendment, or we're voting on the motion?
Voting, not even that. You're voting to cut off debate on the amendment and go straight to voting on the amendment, so you have to vote twice.
This is the vote before the vote.
Vote before the vote.
Straight to...
Who made that motion?
Ms. Hoppy.
Seconded by Matthews.
Motion carries eight to zero.
And now please vote on the amendment.
Did I clear it? Vote again, please. The motion ties four to four with Councilmembers Wooden, Fitzgerald, Pond, and Hoppy voting no. Madam Mayor?
I get to vote?
You are required to vote.
I am. On the amendment, I will vote no.
Amendment fails, you're back to the main motion.
Do you want to...
More discussion, otherwise...
Well...
No, it's the main motion.
It's the main motion, so you can continue to have discussion on the main motion.
The main motion. I move, the motion was to move to go into executive session, blah, blah.
Yeah, yeah, go into executive session and conclude the open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session. That's what the current motion is.
A motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
So, are we going to executive session now?
Sure, thank you.